Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you for being here. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors. The district can be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on the 18th day of December, 2019, at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the office of the district on December 13th, 2019, at 2:00 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551050, about less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. At this time, we have a board member, Mr. Avalos, myself, Chairman Scott Friedman, Dr. Lalan, and Herb Houston in attendance for the meeting. If we may please have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
(Inaudible)
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 Heavenly Father, give us your blessings and guide us this evening. Bless us with wisdom as we make decisions for the good of our community. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
At this time, we have item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. Welcome Victor and Alicia. Thank you for being here. Efforts?
Good evening, Board and staff. This year, we participated and we were, actually, I was very surprised, at the, with the third annual Christmas parade that Port Isabel had. And I want to thank staff because they worked really, really hard in putting all this stuff together and board members that were there. And it was excellent. It was, there were a lot of people that were chanting and were surprised that we were there. And at this point in time, what I'd like to do is, they called me and said that we actually won second place in the commercial and political category. And so, I'd like to present that to the Board and get a picture if that's okay.
Wow.
We can down and do so.
(Applause)
Good job, too.
(Laughter)
I do appreciate staff doing that. One thing I didn't care for was that Alex got to ride in the classic white Mercedes convertible driven by a good-looking blonde. I had to ride in the back truck with the guy dressed like a Grinch.[170.73][170.73](Laughter)
I heard it was fun, so hopefully next year we'll do better and just start it earlier.
I do appreciate them putting it together in such a short period of time. Thank you for doing that.
I'd like to wish everyone a happy holidays and a joyous new year coming up. Anyone else have any comments or anything they'd like to share? Staff, Board, anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Moving along to item number four. Consider and discuss for possible approval the minutes of the workshop meeting and the regular meeting on November 20th, 2019. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Questions, comments?
I'll move to approve.
Motion for approval by Mr. Avalos.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Houston. Are all those in favor? They are? And then opposed? Mr. Kerry, thank you. Moving on to item number five, General Manager's Report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of Board. We're calling our Bond Planning Committee. And they, supposedly, we're supposed to meet, actually tomorrow on the 19th, and have a discussion on some questions and answers, making sure that we respond to the same, you know, same answer to the questions. And finally, they decided that they wanted to change the meeting because the Christmas holidays are right around the corner. So, that's, the Vice Chairman and the Chairman, Rudy and May Dean, had called and said to reschedule for January the 7th. I don't know what, I think it's a Tuesday. Could be, is it a Tuesday? Okay, so they decided to change the schedule to January 7th. So, we're going to have that meeting on January 7th, 2020.
The day before the next board meeting.
What is that?
The day before the next board meeting.
Yes, the day before the next board meeting. And we'll probably have some comments. I'll have some comments for the Board, you know, what transpired during that meeting. That's all I have for the Board.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to item six. Consider and discuss for possible approval of Board travel to attend the 2020 Association of Water Board Directors, AWBD Midwinter Conference on January 17th and January 18th in Dallas.
Who's going?
I'd like to go. It's an Association of Water Board Directors geared towards director staff, training and education, awareness. There's an annual and there's a winter conference.
I'll be going to that.
Is that a motion or is that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the Board travel. I'm not sure who else wants to go, but.
Well, I can make some emails tomorrow and find out, make sure that whoever's going can respond to me tomorrow. That way, we can set up the hotel, the flights, whatever, whatever needs to get done. But I'll send the email, as long as the Board approves it tonight, we'll get going tomorrow.
It's a good conversation.
It's a motion made by Mr. Avalos.
Sir, second.
Seconded by Dr. Lalan. Are all those in favor?
Hi.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries, thank you. Thus far, I think you have Alex and myself would like to go. Hopefully, Dr. Lalan and Mr. Sarki will also attend.
Yes, I'll provide the information to them tomorrow.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven, Director of Operations Report.
As the, I present the same report pretty much every month. Just wanted to know if anybody had any questions. The big difference, as you can see, was a drop from last year to this year as far as the number of callouts and service calls. And that basically has to do with the change of meters. We were doing a lot of changes in the meters at that point. That was the old Badger meter that we had, and a lot of them were starting to give out. So, that's when we started changing some of our AMI meters, the Mueller meters. And that's on the distribution side. And the collection side is pretty much the same number of calls. The only difference, again, it's, a lot of it was, some of these calls were sewer backups. But almost half of those calls that we had, there were 20 of them, almost half of them were private. The customers, for some reason, well, they tend to call us first before they call the plumber. Since we don't charge and we give them a pretty good idea of what the problem is, so then they call the plumber when they find out it's a private deal.
Are we 100% installed with all the meters?
We have about, that's why I haven't given you a report. I will in January. We're about five short of getting completed.
Large commercials.
And most of those are commercials. And we're having some real issues with some of those. Some of those are buried in concrete and, as I was told by Mr. Lopez, and they're having a bit of a problem getting to them, so they're going to have to cut the concrete and get down into them. And hopefully, we don't run into any problems. But the biggest issue has been in scheduling. When we schedule them, the customer has canceled on us for one reason or another. And that's basically the commercials, the hotels and some of the restaurants.
So, that's, that is what we do, like our five commercial accounts? Is that the final?
Yes, that's about it. The only thing we're going to do after that is retrofit fire hydrants. I mean, fire lines, yeah.
For the commercial, right?
Yes.
The high rises?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I have. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item eight, District Engineers Report.
So, the first item here, it's the minutes from the Bond Planning Committee meeting held on November 19th. Yeah, Nadine basically had asked me after the meeting to prepare some minutes just so the people that weren't able to attend can, you know, just become aware of what was discussed there at the meeting and they wouldn't have to go through and sort of repeat themselves in future meetings. So, so the attached meeting minutes is going to be distributed, well, actually was emailed to everybody on the committee. And we'll go ahead and make a motion at the January 7th meeting for consideration and approval. And so, I mean, you know, I think it was, it was good information as far as, you know, getting a better understanding of what the expectations are and, you know, like a lot of the, of the discussion on there, mainly at the water plant, was about seawater and how to address that component. I mean, we decided, as a committee, or the committee decided, you know, not to consider, to take no action on the Proposition 2 for seawater, basically to keep that authorization in place. But they do want to see some kind of a future condition showing how Water Plant 1 can eventually get to a seawater component, you know, down the road. And so, that's, that's one of those elements that we'd have to, you know, discuss a little further, you know, just, just see what direction we want to take with the, with the setup like that. But that's, that's basically just a summary here, safe to say.
Yeah, it's a very good information, actually. I'm glad that you guys applied that. Oh, and there was a little bit of discussion also in the text here about the, or the concern about the, the worst-case scenario being we have to get water from another supplier. And it just made me think about the possibility of at least coming up with a plan or have something in place, at a minimum memorandum of understanding or something that we can move forward if that were to happen at some point. I think it was a concern of theirs, but I guess it does warrant just at least trying to come up with some kind of plan in the case, worst-case scenario that we would have to get water.
If we needed to get water from somebody else.
Yeah, like, I guess the furthest discussion would be like an emergency interconnect with East Rio Hondo Water Supply Corporation on 510. But, I mean, basically, the, the committee basically concluded it was outside of their scope, it'd be an administrative action.
Right, yeah, that's kind of what they were alluding to is that, you know, that was outside of their scope of what they were going to do. But they did kind of suggest that we look at it and consider what options we have or how we would go about it as a Board to have something at the ready because the timeline in installing that line would be considerable. So, I think it warrants at least having a plan, a plan of action as to, in case we would have to go that route.
I think we need to take into consideration that, that East Rio Hondo has a whole lot of excess capacity.
Right.
But perhaps you could do some type of inter-local emergency agreement where if they needed some water from us, or if we needed some water from them, something like that, but just to be able to tap into their line and take it when we need it. That's not that long.
Yeah, it'd be some kind of agreement we'd reach, I mean, to really get any kind of flow that's substantial, we'd have to get a 12-inch line, a minimum upgrade, I mean, like.
How far approximately would you say to be able to connect to that?
It'd be from the Old Holly Beach alignment, where the road used to be. That's where we reduced down from a 12-inch down to a 10-inch. And so, we'd have to run that all the way up to Buena Vista Road as a 12-inch line.
A little over 15,000 feet, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I text numbers at 30 minutes.
But the thing about it is, East Rio Hondo doesn't have a line that big this far out.
Well, well, when we transferred those customers, west, east, west of Buena Vista, that's when they extended their 12-inch line. So, that's only been in place three, four years, yeah.
But then, that's a way to look at it.
And the meter, like, in an interconnect could be switched either direction depending on who needs the water, yeah.
But, anyway, just something for us to consider.
Here, our council here, Councilman, he works for East Rio Hondo too, so we can work something out if we need to.
Does the state have to acknowledge that also, or, I mean, is that strictly just an inter-local type agreement?
What do you mean?
If, if you were to do that, can, can the inter-locals make that? It doesn't have to involve the state approval or anything or not?
I don't think so.
I think there was an agreement in place before that we were serving their area and we were charging the customers just like ours, you know, like, until they extended their line, then they took over. There wasn't anything from the state that was signed. It was just a local agreement.
I'll look at it, make sure.
Any other comments from the review of the minutes?
No, they're very detailed. I really appreciate that.
All right. So, I guess the next item here is state water plan. Just to give you background on seawater, in 2010, it was a recommended strategy for the Guadalupe Maggiore Water District to have a seawater desalination plant located on South Padre Island. In the 2015 update, we had removed that recommended strategy from the plan. We were going towards the water reclamation here in PI. And now, with the seawater coming back into discussion, we're, we're, today, actually, was a Region M meeting, which Rayland, what do you, Reese Nichols, he's an attendant, he attended the Region M meeting, so he can probably provide a little more detail. But we went ahead and submitted a, getting a recommended strategy for seawater, but with that description being here in Port Isabel, where we blend with the, with the river water, see if we can make use of the wastewater effluent to somehow come up with a more efficient seawater plant with an intake here in the Turning Basin and using our existing outfall extension as our discharge with Ryan. So, that's, that's basically what we submitted, you know, to consider as a recommended strategy in the.
That was, that's been sent out already?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if you want to.
Charles mentioned, work together the, the information that Region M would need to consider that as a recommended water management strategy for, for the district. Got it submitted last week, so it could go to the review committee. And then, at their meeting this morning, they basically were covering all of the requests. The engineer for Region M indicated all the information that was provided, met what they needed, and so it would be included in the regional plan moving forward in addition to the reclamation. What's important about that is to be considered for financing funds from Water Development Board and any of theirs. You can't get funding unless you're in the water plan. So, now, the reclamation water strategy is in the Region M plan as well as the current version of seawater desal as a water management strategy.
We have water rights to 7,500 million.
Yeah, acre-feet per year, yeah, 76, yeah.
100, 7,600. 7,600. I'm sorry. And we usually use 5,000?
Yeah, well, yes, because under, under drought conditions, we actually get prorated. So, under that worst-case scenario, which is when the reservoirs are at 37%, that's our, that's our worst case when we're fully prorated. And that's when we get cut down to 5,700 acre-feet. And so, under that drought condition, we're at that 95%, 100% usage of our water rights under drought condition.
Because we get drought down the percentage that we can have. How many times has that happened?
Oh, in the last drought in 2012, we were fully prorated for about three years. And then, that's, I mean.
And so, we had a three-year drought and we were prorated, and did we ever run out of water? Like, how, how big a concern is it actually?
No, well, I mean, it's just a matter of taking measures. I mean, we've had to use the, what is it, Ebers, the Fish and Wildlife, we borrowed from them a couple of times.
Their water rights?
Some of the water rights can be restricted when you're on drought. It doesn't mean you have free flow of all the water rights. You have, some of them are agricultural, some of them are municipal, some of them are, they're classified differently in the drought restrictions.
Yeah, yeah, this rule was written in 71, basically, when, when law was sort of set and all, all diversions off the river kind of set up like bank accounts. And ours was set up with this proration rule, you know, put in place.
Carlos, how long have you been manager?
When, yes, when, when the drought is in place, we send out, it's below the 50% level. So, what we do is send out notices on conservation measures, and they do work. We did send them out at that time and the people were using less water, keeping an eye on the neighbors. We would get call, phone calls where I was mentioning, my neighbor here is using water. So, we'd go out there and check it out and, you know, tell them to cut down the usage of wasting water or, you know, use it wisely. But it does work. We did have less revenue coming in, but we did save, I guess, water rights because the conservation measures were taken seriously by the customers. So, that's what I wanted to mention, that, that when we get to that point, we do send out notices for conservation measures.
How long have you been manager?
Seven years.
Have, has there ever been a time where you sat, came into the office, and were like, man, operator, we might not have enough water to meet the customers this first month?
No, not, not really. But it does, it does come back in my mind and say, like, you have to be prepared, you have to be prepared. We don't have a plan of action, like, say, alternative source of water in place now. There was one where we were part of the South Most Regional Water Authority, where PUB is using brackish water. That would have been a good one, but the, the Board at that time decided not to go that route.
Right, we're still a silent partner, we just have to buy into it at this stage without having to deal.
And extend a large line that way if we do.
But we've come close to 90% of our water rate.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, not close to that, yes.
We've come close to our full capacity.
Under drought conditions.
Yeah, yeah, under normal conditions, we're fine. It's those drought, those drought years is what we have to watch out for.
The, one of the things that we did, we kind of borrowed some of the water rights from US Fish and Wildlife. They have 1,000 acre-feet of water rights. And they don't, and we kind of exercised that and told them, like, okay, we're going to pump some water from your water rights into a reservoir. We kind of divert water for them. And then, they use it for the big reservoirs they have out there.
Yeah, it's for wetland flooding on Rice Track Road. It's our, we convey it to them.
So, they weren't using that water at that time, so we kind of borrowed some and they said, oh, whenever you want the 200 acre-feet that we borrowed, you can just let us know when you need it and we'll give it back to you. So, that's, we, we have a, like, a savings plan on that side.
Yeah, that's our buffer.
I mean, it's, it's good to have insurance, but you can insurance yourself to death as a business too. So, when it comes to desalination plan, water reclamation, getting water plant number one going again, sometimes I want to make sure we don't overkill when it comes to all of the insurance that we necessarily need to have, especially when we're asking for the fund.
Right.
That's my main concern with it. I want to make sure we have the right amount of insurance.
Yeah, and as far as taking those steps, I mean, getting Water Plant 1 up to a microfiltration and being able to produce that same quality at Water Plant 2 and being able to ramp it up to 550B, I mean, that's probably the most critical step, which is what we're moving in, you know, in terms of priorities.
And we just purchased, like, 175 acre-feet.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we've had two water rights purchases to.
Did we buy some last year as well?
Yeah.
Came out?
It kind of helps, you know, to have more water rights.
Yeah, well, that's what keeps us above that 95% to 100% of those two purchases.
Do we monitor that all the time? Go buy more water rights? Do they come up for auction, do they come up for auctions?
There is water rights all, all the time available, but the, the cost of it is pretty high right now. We don't have any funds for it right now.
Yeah, TCQ has a lease.
Only we save, like, an account for water rights that, that we save some money for that.
Just under what the cost, somebody would do a calculation, like, is it better to buy more water rights and spend some money on that or build an entire salivization plant?
Yeah, I would go, I would recommend that, that we have an alternative source, which is desal or brackish water, which is groundwater, just to have that extra, you know, assurance. Because if you take it for granted that the water at the river is, you can buy as many water rights, but then if the drought comes in and you don't have the water to push through.
Has it ever dried up?
Yes, it has. What happens is that the, the water that dries up in the river, they don't have any push water, that they call it. So, you have to pump more water than when, when you order, like, 200 acre-feet, you have to order, like, 400 to help you bring it over across from Amistad and Falcon Lakes this way. They call it push water because there's other people that, that help each other, right? But at certain times, when they don't have water, we don't have water, that push water is the one that gets the water over here. We don't have that, so you have to double it up.
Yeah, well, when drought is when agriculture gets cut off and that's what's pushing our water, we're just a drop in the bucket compared to the agricultural flow. When that stops because of a drought, well, we lose a lot, we have a lot much more, we have much higher water loss, just getting that water over.
So, it, it does get to the point where it, I get worried about it.
Sure, we can't butt mud, but I just don't know how often it's, we've ever been worried about, oh.
Yeah, that's just, that's just how we, the watermaster regulates it to prevent that condition.
I do get worried.
Trying to learn, trying to learn a little bit.
All right, so that concludes the engineers' report unless there's more comments?
Get together with you, Scott, you've been around a long time, you can help out.
It's very fascinating. My pleasure.
All right. And then, for item nine, if I could, you know, Reese Nichols decided to, to hold off on the travel, so, so we're not intending to present him as listed in item nine.
Okay. So, I guess we'll just move on to item number 10. Is that correct?
Yes.
We don't need table, do we?
We'll just take no action.
Okay. Moving on to no action on number nine. Moving on to item number 10. Consider and discuss for possible approval of windstorm hurricane and hail insurance coverage for January 31st, 2020 to January 31st, 2021.
The insurance due date for, for windstorm hurricane and hail insurance is by the end of next month. So, we went out for quotes to get new insurance. We only received one, one proposal. The comment from the other insurance agent was that the market was blocked, and that's the reason they couldn't send proposals.
What does that mean?
That means one insurance agent has a quote for all the insurance companies that are available. Insurance companies, they only provide one quote per agent. They can't send multiple quotes to different agents for the same market. But they request quotes for all the markets available. That's why. So, based on that, we are recommending the approval to the agency. The amount that I have here, the 139,000, they change it after I submit the, the backup to Dacey. So, they drop off $5,000. So, the new amount is 133,777 with 35 cents. That's a new.
And the valuation is 21 million, is that what we're covering?
Yes.
To cover the value we're covering, 133,000.
The equipment and the buildings, yes.
Who's the 21, who determines the 21 million dollar valuation? Is that Cameron County? Tax appraisal or how does that?
This comes both from our, our property.
Records?
Yeah, our property records and our, we can request the change, the values be, be changed, but it's, our best estimate is to replace the cost revealed.
We usually go by the appraisal of the district's members.
Cameron County appraisal.
I'll move to approve.
Motion for approval by Mr. Avalos.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Lalan. Are all those in favor? They are, non-opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number 11. Consider and discuss for possible approval of purchase of a hydraulic hammer for the John Deere mini excavator.
Now, we ask for quotes to get a, well, not ask for quotes, we need to purchase a hydraulic hammer for the John Deere excavator. Doggett is the distributor from John Deere here in this area, so it's a single source. And we want to get the hydraulic hammer to be also a John Deere, like the mini excavator.
Questions, comments?
This is, that one just fits on that one tractor? Or will it fit on both?
No, just on the John.
Just on the John Deere?
Yes.
Yeah, but what I heard is that the, it's, the whole district's going to utilize it.
Oh, yeah, no, we've been, we've been needing this since, because I've been on board.
Yes.
I know, I requested that one.
Yeah, our property records and our, we can request the change, the values be, be changed. But it's, our best estimate is to replace with cost review.
We usually go by the appraisal district's numbers.
Cameron County appraisal.
I'll move to approve.
Motion for approval by Mr. Avalos.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Laland. Are all those in favor? They are? Not opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number 11. Consider and discuss for possible approval of the purchase of a hydraulic hammer for the John Deere mini excavator.
Now, we ask for quotes to get a, well, not ask for quotes. We need to purchase a hydraulic hammer for the John Deere excavator. Doggett is the distributor from Yordlee here in this area, so it's a single source. And we want to get the hydraulic hammer to be also a John Deere, like the mini excavator.
Questions, comments?
This is, that one just fits on that one tractor? Or will it fit on both?
No, just on the John.
Just on the John Deere?
Yes.
Yeah, but what I heard is that the, it's, the whole district's going to utilize it.
Oh, yeah, no, we've been, we've been needing this since, because I've been on board.
Yes.
I know I requested that when I first got on this board, but I was just curious if, if it will fit in other equipment.
The, the attachment kit for the hammer, it's different.
Okay, all right. I'll move to approve. Motion for approval by Mr. Avalos. Seconded by Mr. Houston. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Not opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 12. Consider and discuss for possible ratification of payment on lab testing for the permit renewals.
And we already issued a PO to get these testings for the permit renewals for the, for wastewater plants that we have. This item is just for ratification of this pay.
I'll move to approve.
Motion for approval by Mr. Avalos. Seconded by Dr. Laland. Are all those in favor? They are? Not opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 13. Consider and review expenditures from November 1st, 2019 through November 30th, 2019. Anyone have any questions about any one in particular or need a motion to recognize them all?
Two moves.
Recognized by Mr. Avalos and acknowledged by Mr. Houston. Are all those acknowledged? Say aye.
Aye.
Yes, okay. No, no issues there. Moving on to item number 14. Executive session committed by the Open Meetings Act, BTC, a government code section 551-001. That sequence under section 551-071, consternation with attorney, section 551-072. Deliberation about real property, update on legal matters concerning rape pairs appeal of the raw water rate. Need a motion to go into executive session at 6:01 PM. Motion is made by Dr. Laland.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Avalos. All those in favor? We're in executive session. Need a motion to come out of executive session at 6:15 PM. Motion made by Mr. Houston. Seconded by Mr. Avalos. We're out of executive session. Item 15, consider and action on executive session items if necessary. There's no action taken at this time. Meeting is adjourned at 6:16 PM.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn meeting at 6:16. Made by Mr. Avalos. Seconded by Mr. Houston. Are all those in favor? Meeting is officially adjourned.